It is now 6:07. We will reconvene our regular meeting. And Dr. Head, do you have any introduction of special guests that you would like to make at this time?
Yes. Dr. Ardeleun, just now. While he's coming up, I did want to thank, it's not only University Park, but also if you work for the Corporate College, we've got two different operations here. So, by the way, I just noticed the red carpet. I didn't see it when I came in, but thank you.
Dwight challenged me, he said, "What a mess job. What is going on? Where is the red carpet?" So, we had to respond, so, thank you. Well, welcome. I really appreciate this, and honor for us to be hosting you tonight. There are two, three other functions going on tonight. We have a theater being, again, the team is being played. And also, we have a point there, there is about 100 families of Hispanic students are meeting on campus tonight, starting at 7:30. Again, many, many thanks to the Corporate College team. I don't know if they're here, I would like to recognize them. This facility is managed and led by Linda Head's team, so, again, we appreciate what you saw. It looks like it's not me, it's a lot of people, so, thank you. I would also like to thank my facilities guys. I know that with the rain and the storm yesterday with Dr. Richard, where is Richard? Ah, they're always sitting quiet. What you saw, the students, that we would like to showcase always, I know that you, the board members, they enjoyed the students' art. All I had to do was I asked my Dean of Arts and Humanities, Jonah, to say that, "Come and do something special for the world." So, I'd like Jonah to come and recognize our students.
Thank you. Good evening. On behalf of Dr. Ardeleun, I would like to recognize a few of our students and a few of our faculty from tonight. Lamar Burkholder, Sandra Solstrom, and our students, a newly formed percussion ensemble, as well as our newly formed pop singers, Tilon, who's the instructor for that, along with a couple of our student ambassadors. We had 11 on campus tonight, including two that we brought in tonight. This is Deisha, this is Cynthia.
So, board members, if you, I know we didn't have enough time tonight, but whenever you get a chance, University Park is a, I mean, I think all of our colleges, they're different and they're unique, but University Park is really a unique experience, so, the, I mean, Dr. Ardeleun and his group have done a terrific job up there. When you walk around up there, it is the neatest place, a lot of students hanging around. And I wasn't sure, when we first bought the place and looked at it and talked about it, whether or not the students would like this kind of setting, but they have just fully embraced it. So have the employees, by the way. It is, um, some of you may not know that we also have system office over here, so, we're coming over here, every time we come over here, somebody thinks something's wrong, but we actually have offices here. And so, and I try to stay out of University Park's business, but sometimes to get to the cafeteria, I have to walk by your other business, but thank you. You really are doing a great job here. So, a couple of other introductions. One is, I'd like to introduce Jim Kane, who is the former superintendent of Klein, and Jim's right there, thank you. Jane, I need some help over pronouncing, where's Jane? Duckman, I just like it spelled. Okay, she's a reporter with the HoustonChronicle.com, and, or Chron.com, and I thanked her for her accuracy on reporting last month's board meeting. Thank you very much. So, Helen Clarity, would you, Helen Clarity, Helen, would you, sorry. Helen is Chief of Staff in my office, by the way, and Vice Chancellor, if you don't know that, it's not like I don't recognize her, her office is next to mine. So, she's going to introduce the 19, or the 2018 LSC LEAP, which stands for...
The Leadership Education Program. The Chancellor asked me what LEAP stood for earlier today, and I said, "Leadership."
It's just one of the leadership programs that we have for our employees, so, Helen.
Yeah, it's always a pleasure to be here, Dr. Smith, trustees, Chancellor. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce the third cohort of our Leadership Education Advancement Program, LSC LEAP. This is one of several year-long leadership programs that we do. LEAP is for our support staff. You also will meet the Academy cohort next month, and we also have LSC LEAP and Next Generation Leadership for a more senior leadership.
Hold on a second, I don't think that's working.
Try again?
There you are.
Great. And LEAP is a career development and leadership opportunity program, and so, the goal is to provide the staff with learning opportunities and career advancement at Lone Star College. It's a competitive process to get in, talked about leadership and career development. They explore career paths and develop a personal strategic plan. One of the most interesting statistics, or two of them, is 60% of our LEAP alumni and current fellows have been promoted or have taken on leadership roles in our professional support staff associations. We have PSSA at each college and one at each of the system offices, and it's a wonderful leadership opportunity for our staff. And 35% of our current cohort have been promoted or are in PSSA, and I think those are terrific numbers. They're taking what they're learning and using it for better for themselves and better for Lone Star. And so, it is my pleasure to introduce the 2018 graduates, going to ask them to come forward as I call their names, and then we'll come up front to take a picture with the trustees. From Lone Star College Sci Fair, Eduardo Monsivias. From Lone Star College Kingwood, Desi Hunt. From Lone Star College Montgomery, Brandon Boswell. Gregory Brown. Lynette Dempsey. Taylor Dickinson. And Alan Poppy. From Lone Star College North Harris, Shannet Abs. Dahlia Alejos. Shiran Cooper. David Hernandez. with their graduation ceremony and presentations this afternoon. Kristy Hunger. Nadia Pickwode. And Priscilla Valenzuela. From Lone Star College University Park, Adam Barbara and Cassandra Marquez. And from Lone Star College System Office, Janet Chess.
So, thank you all, employees.
Congratulations. And as always, thank you to the OD team, Dr. Alicia Friday, Melissa Hinshaw, Katie
We have a special guest that just came in, it's our former board chair, who was on our board for 16 years?
21.
21 years.
Halbert, and the rest of the staff, who put all these terrific programs together and
Well, it's 16 plus five, but Randy Bates is here, so, thank you, welcome.
lead our teams through this all year long.
Do we have any other, Helen, any other guests?
If you all could come up front, okay. I know I forgot the names. If you all could come up front, we'll take your picture, and if the OD leadership team could go in.
Okay.
Somebody has to make an acceptance speech.
So, I'd like for Jennifer to come up for...
Who's involved here for that?
Yeah.
Jennifer's going to introduce our Vendere Barnes &amp; Noble and talk about what's happening with our bookstore.
Yeah, excuse me, yes, good evening. So, Lone Star College and Barnes &amp; Noble College. So, in June, the board here did approve for us to negotiate and execute a contract with Barnes &amp; Noble College to be our new bookstore operations provider. The contract start date with them was October 1st, 2018. So, we had all of our campus and center bookstores, they closed on September 24th, 2018, being operated by Follett, and reopened under Barnes &amp; Noble College on October 8th. And to give kind of some idea of how significant of a transition this was for us, Follett had been our bookstore provider for over 30 years, and now we've transitioned to Barnes &amp; Noble. So, this transition was a thing for us to definitely go do over the past few months between Lone Star College and Barnes &amp; Noble. We, there have been people involved in this at every level, at all the colleges, at system office, a lot of work went into doing this transition over the past few months. I mean, even just starting from the RFP and evaluating the proposals, the contract negotiations, definitely through the height of the transition period, there were weekly conference calls between OTS and financial aid. We're still working on the faculty adoptions, and I'll talk about that more a bit here in a minute, but this list just gives you an idea of really, a lot of work has gone into this transition. So, I mean, any transition this size, you know, I'd like to say went perfectly, it did not. I think, given, I do think it went very well, but we did have some challenges. For one thing, when the transition occurred, the physical transition of the bookstores themselves, as we tried to talk timeline, there was no such thing as a good time to close the bookstores. Because, right, fall semester starts, so you definitely don't want to close them at the start of the semester, and, but then, we have late start classes as well. So, there's students buying books throughout the entire semester. So, we picked what seemed to be the least worst time, which was this period, period from September 24th through October 8th. So, it definitely made some late start classes a challenge, but we picked it to be after the bulk of the fall semester course textbooks were completed and prior to spring registration starting. So, that was why we picked that time period. But of course, definitely challenges did come in, where we had some books that were trying to be ordered under Follett that were backordered, and then we had to try to get those orders transitioned over to Barnes &amp; Noble. So, there were definitely some challenges there, and of course, at the same time, we did have some challenges with publishers that would have occurred regardless, but it was sort of now on top of this transition. Communications was definitely an interesting challenge, because this was something that touched everybody. So, I definitely even personally took some good lessons, I think, for future large transitions in making sure that everybody that needs to be getting the messages, messages are. This one, I hope we turn into an opportunity. We did find some, for Texas Workforce Veterans Administration, some processes that has kind of just been operating under the same process for unchanged for such a long time that we need to bring it into the current century. So, that posed some challenges, but I hope now that it's an opportunity to update how some of that is managed. So, there was definitely some good challenges to overcome in this, but as I said, given the size of this transition, I mean, this is something that does touch almost everybody at all of the, all of the colleges, I do think this went well. I mean, 13 locations were transitioned in seven days. And, I mean, Barnes &amp; Noble had to conduct interviews. Our loading dock area, I mean, they had books starting to arrive prior to the October 1st start date. And here, this is where to show, so Barnes &amp; Noble brought, 55 people from Barnes &amp; Noble came to support this transition. And, so, just to kind of show for this new relationship we have with Barnes &amp; Noble College, here tonight is Mark Eckhart, he's the Vice President of College Relations, and Felix Robinson, the General Manager assigned here for Lone Star College. And I would like them to come up and tell you personally a little bit about what the vision is of Barnes &amp; Noble College.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you all for having us here today. I can speak on behalf of the entire Barnes &amp; Noble executive team, just how proud and honored we are to be selected as your bookstore partner, and really look forward to many, many years to come with a successful relationship. We are in the middle of a very transformative part in the higher education retailing course material industry, and we are absolutely positioned and look forward to working with you and Jennifer and everybody on delivering course materials to students, lowering the price, working with, with the format and the delivery modes of that to ensure that all students have the materials they need when they need them, because we all know when students are prepared, it turns to successful outcomes in the classroom. And that's who we are. We are not a cookie cutter organization, so as Jennifer mentioned, the challenges that we're faced during this transition, we are absolutely positioned and look forward to customizing programs and solutions to serve this great institution. It really comes down to affordability and access to those course materials. But also with Barnes &amp; Noble College, we're retailers, and so, you get, and your partner, decades of experience of successful retailing with a singular focus on higher ed retailing. So, in addition to course materials, we're excited to bring enhancements to logo product and technology, food and snacks, and all of the things to serve the students and staff and faculty on each of the campuses. And so, many exciting things to come in every product category, and then I'm going to let Felix talk about probably the most exciting part.
Hi, everybody, I'm Felix Renee Robinson, and for me, it's personal. I'm so excited to be your local servant here at Lone Star College, and I'm excited, and I've been excited since my daughter graduated from Kingwood, from the Respiratory Therapy Program, 12 years ago. And then my son, my oldest son graduated from North Harris, from the Mechanical Program. And so, I have a mechanical engineer and a respiratory therapist that's very successful, so Dad is happy. At Lone Star, I gave them the opportunity to make their own living. And so, I've been wanting to serve Lone Star for quite some time. After 21 years with Barnes &amp; Noble, I got my opportunity. So, I'm glad to serve your students and your faculty and your staff and to deliver superior service, and for me, it's all about the people. We've hired a great group, I think, to serve Lone Star. We've already hired 50 of Lone Star students in our bookstores, and so, we're big on training and developing students, we have a great internship program, and hopefully, we'll be developing students into retail managers around the country, and we guarantee them a job anywhere they want to live. So, I'm happy to be at Lone Star, and I hope you have a great meeting.
So, and finally, I hope you noticed the pictures on the easels outside as you walked in, those are pictures of sort of the grand openings at each of the six main bookstore locations at each of the campuses, and I want, we wanted to do this tonight as sort of the grand reopening of our bookstores under Barnes &amp; Noble College.
I just had two comments. One, the people you really ought to get to know are the faculty senate presidents, that's who you're going to be dealing with right there, a lot of, you already met? Okay, then, I'm behind on all that, and I'm going to remember what you said about lower prices and student access, because that's the issue with us, it is the issue. So, thank you, we're glad to have you here. We're excited about the partnership. I'm really glad that you know about Lone Star already, so we don't have to go through Lone Star 101, that's great, thank you.
You know, Dr. Head, I agree with, during the time Jim Kane and I were in school, we paid 18 and 20 bucks per book, and it was a minor portion of our educational cost. And now, I hear that it's a significant part of the cost, and so, I echo what Dr. Head said, I hope we can come up with a solution that the cost of books will not keep anybody, you know, from attending school. So, look forward to that.
Can I ask a question? It's my understanding that the contract that we had with Follett prevented faculty from telling students that they could get their books elsewhere, and I understand why that might be a contract term. When it does come to pass that books for a course are not in the bookstore on time, what leeway is there for faculty to tell students where they can find their books?
I'd be happy to address that. We have nothing that prevents faculty from directing anybody, you know, to the open marketplace. What I will tell you is, hopefully, you felt Felix's presence here, he's just a darn nice guy, and nobody is going to work harder to make sure that those situations don't happen. And, you know, with an institution this big, there's probably going to be a hiccup somewhere, some way. But what you have from our commitment, from our president, all the way to local management team is, we will, we will address anything that comes up. We price match, we will give your faculty no reason to send anybody else anywhere, and we're here to earn everybody's business.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we could do a picture for the sort of grand reopening of all of our bookstores.
What do you, they want to come up here in front?
Yeah, we were just...
Thank you for pointing that out.
He has this bubble around him.
If you could move over just a little bit, so you got the time. You know, we can Photoshop anything.
Get me dark hair.
Give me a sharpie.
Thank you.
Okay. Board members, at this point, we need to approve the minutes, and I'm going to take them separately, three separate sets of minutes on this agenda. The first one is approval of the minutes of the September 18, 2018 public tax hearing. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes of September 18 public tax hearing. Are there any questions? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign. Any abstentions?
One.
One abstentions, okay, thank you, Dr. Halsey. Okay, the second one is the September 26, 2018 public tax hearing. Need a motion and a second on those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the minutes of the September 26 public tax hearing. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you.
I had my dates confused, I should have abstained on the first one.
Okay, let the records reflect that, Wood, on the first set. Thank you. Okay. Finally, the October 4, 2018 workshop and regular meeting of the board trustees. May I have a motion and a second?
Move.
Second.
Moving properly secondly, we adopt the minutes of October 4, 2018. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign. Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you.
I had my dates confused, I should have abstained on the first one.
Okay, let the records reflect that, Wood, on the first set. Thank you. Okay. Finally, the October 4, 2018 workshop and regular meeting of the board trustees. May I have a motion and a second?
Move.
Second.
Moving properly secondly, we adopt the minutes of October 4, 2018. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion passes, thank you. Dr. Head, special reports and announcements.
Yeah, the first one is, I want to congratulate you, Dr. Smith, who was, for the rest of you may not know this, he was elected Member-at-Large for the American Association of Community Colleges Trustees, which is a major, major, that's the organization for the trustees. So, he's also on the board of the Texas Community College Association, so, that's a rarity, but I think there are over 6,000 trustees, and how many board members are there? Maybe...
1,500 times about eight.
I mean, right.
How many?
Right, there's, there's over 6,000 trustees, but...
I mean, directors?
Yeah.
Okay, that's eight.
Eight directors.
Five regional and three at large.
So, that's a tribute to his, they know him, they, they know what he's done, he's been extremely active in the association, and it's a tribute to Lone Star also that he works here, so, congratulations.
Well, thank you, but first, though, I'm not sure I deserve all of the credit. I had individuals that helped me with materials for campaigning. Karen Love George did a great job with providing those documents, they were well done, and did a great job of portraying me as a very handsome and intelligent young man. I also had three other board members present, and two of them participated in the caucuses, and they did a heck of a job selling, you know, my worth, you know, to that group, to the extent, not only was I elected, but I received more votes than anybody else, and I was real proud of that. So, I plan to represent Lone Star well, and do the best that I can to bring a positive light on this great institution of higher learning. Thank you.
Congratulations. So, the next piece is, we want to show you a short video, and this comes from our LSC 2020, and we had recently had a, we had a, we had a gathering, and to see where we are and what needed to be done and how we want to go forward, but I, they showed this video to begin with, what is this, about two and a half minutes or three, four, five minutes? It's really good, I want you to see this.
My name's Leigh Anne Nutt.
Laura Cardio.
David Pyle.
Matthew Sanford.
Darlene Lewis.
Clifford Johnson.
John.
Lori Anisey.
Marie Morrison.
Nora Austin.
Jennifer Martinez.
Sean Aden.
Linda Buckel.
Brittany Lang.
Shannet Abs.
Oscar Ramos.
My job is Chair of Education, First Year Experience and Teacher Education.
Director of Governance Equity and Records.
President at Lone Star College, Tom Ball.
I serve as the Dean of the Victor Center.
Internim Associate Dean of Instruction at Fairbanks Center, and Associate Professor of English at Lone Star College Sci Fair Main Campus.
Faculty.
Coordinator for Leadership Development.
Dean of the Tascida Center and the Process Technology Center.
I have the honor of serving as the President of Lone Star College University Park.
So, my title is Deputy General Counsel over at the Office of the General Counsel. That's my job.
Trick question, we should be doing all of them, and that's a trick question.
I think student success.
Student success and quality for all of our programs.
The resources that I've seen recently implemented focus more on retaining students in the course classes and offering more resources for them to be successful.
Ah, wow. The key results, I would say, are student success, always making sure that our students are doing as well as they can, giving them the resources they need to be successful, and to make sure that they are achieving the goals that they have.
Student success.
That's at the heart of everything we do at Lone Star Montgomery.
One of our priority goals at University Park is graduation, looking at our first time in college students this fall semester, and to make sure that they make it all the way through, that they graduate with an associate's degree or certificate, and on top of that, they transfer to a four-year school of their choice.
Well, the first thing is collaboration amongst all the faculty to, to bring up success rates for success and completion, that would be one.
We're focused on three key results at Lone Star College, Tom Ball, persistence, overall successful course completion, and transfer.
Well, of course, the results are always focused on our student success, and we recently started to challenge ourselves to increase our graduation rate by 300% in three years.
Probably people being happy with OGC, I think is probably the most...
I guess, probably the thing that I see that is most unusual in our culture is the cohesion between the campuses.
That was working at the front counter during that specific time, just to support the flow of students. He walked in the door, he was country, and he was non-traditional, and I helped him answer some basic questions on what he needed to do to become a college student. And as he walked out the door, I heard him tell his wife, "I'm a college student, I don't have to be a hillbilly anymore." And he came back a few months later, and I asked him about his statement, and he said, "You don't understand, people like me don't get to go to college." And he said that he really was excited about becoming a college student at Lone Star College. And he also followed it by saying, "Don't get me wrong, I'm still going to go out and shoot a squirrel in either."
What we're starting to see is the application of the results pyramid... Well, of course, the results are always focused on our student success, and we recently started to challenge ourselves to increase our graduation rate by three hundred percent in three years.
Probably people being happy with OGC, I think is probably the most.
I guess, probably the thing that I see that is most unusual in our culture is the cohesion between the campuses.
That was working at the front counter during that specific time, just to support the flow of students. He walked in the door, uh, he was country, and he was, uh, non-traditional, and I helped him answer some basic questions on what he needed to do to become a college student. And as he walked out the door, I heard him tell his wife, "I'm a college student, I don't have to be a hillbilly anymore." And he came back a few months later, and I asked him about his statement, and he said, "Uh, you don't understand, people like me don't get to go to college." And, uh, he said that he really was excited about becoming a college student at Lone Star College. And he also followed it by saying, "Now, don't get me wrong, I'm still going to go out and shoot a squirrel in either."
What we're starting to see is the application of the results pyramid start to be applied to how we look at the student experience.
We have heard to seek out our administrators, our administrators make the, the time to come around and speak with us.
Is the value that we are placing on diversity.
I think the most positive change that I've seen is that we're all working better together. For example, with the Diversity Advisory Committee, um, we've been able to bring together individuals from different campuses and start talking about the issues that really matter.
Well, there is a lot of changes that are happening, and to me, culture is what has been helping us to grow as an organization, as a college, as a campus, and also for the leadership as far as bringing organizational maturity to us.
Does so much to help us, uh, you know, attain our, our key results.
But culture is everything, it's again, uh, it's very easy to have all kinds of strategic plans and, and, and everything else, but culture is what gets things done.
We work on culture to achieve the results that we want.
For us to become one and to make a positive impact on our organization and the community we serve.
Organizational culture specifically impacts everything we do.
The culture sets the tone for everything.
Culture really drives, is, is really a backbone for our day-to-day life.
I believe that you work on culture because you understand that it's not something that happens naturally, at least not the culture you want to intentionally have.
Sure, it's so that, that, uh, that the processes are, are not only streamlined, but everything is hitting on all cylinders so that everyone can be successful, not only in our jobs, but the students' in completion and success rates.
Culture's everything.
My name is Sean Adon.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah, it's thunder.
Yeah, it's thunder.
What positive changes?
Sorry.
That's okay.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Anything else, okay. Dr. Pearson, are you ready? Thank you.
Good evening, trustees, Board Chair and Chancellor. On behalf of the Presidents tonight, I'm reporting on student retention, recruitment, learning, and general college morale from a different perspective than what you've seen over the last couple of years. Basically, what's landscape got to do with all of this? So we've just heard from the video that all of these things are important. Again, what does landscape have to do with this? The physical layout and landscape of a campus makes a statement about the institution even more so than words do. It not so subtly hints about the kind of care and attention one may experience or even expect there. After all, if the college goes to the trouble to have well-kept lawns and flower beds, it surely will put in the energy into caring about its students and employees. So you cannot overstate the power of the first impression. Obviously, this includes all of the Lone Star College sites. Look clean and well-maintained. And as this North Harris student notes, the grass is freshly cut, the sidewalks are clean, the flowers are beautiful, and it does matter. So really, how a campus looks says a lot to those that enter. And not only does it make a, um, a definite impression on our students, but also on potential hires, candidates coming to the campus for interviews, make that impression right off the bat and decide, is this the place that they want to be? The landscape also says a lot and has a lot to do about learning, and these are in outdoor spaces. More than fifty percent of student learning in college occurs outside the classroom. A wide range of natural settings in and around the college campus can play a role in student learning and engagements. And as we can see from this Tom, Lone Star College Tomball student, that they enjoy the very close, small kind of atmosphere where they get face-to-face experience, and no matter what the age of our facilities, they're all well-maintained. We can see obvious examples of social interaction, interaction taking place in these other areas. And at University Center, University Park, the Center for Science and Innovation, definitely leaves an impression on students, not only is the coffee shop close by, but the wonderful rock wall gives them all kinds of experiences with technology. And again, that's part of the internal landscape. Other examples of social interaction, and note when you're sitting in these spaces, what you can look out and see. So definitely, the campus environment influences student retention, and that's strictly by design, by the different, um, environments and niches that allow students to come together. And we all know from the CSE data, the importance of student engagement on retention. What about those quiet places? Because student learning also requires study and reflection. The physical environment has a major impact on human feelings, behavior, interaction, engagement, and community. This obvious fact has been confirmed in many research studies, including studies that show a physical environment influences the energy level and positive attitude of people in a space and how much time they're willing to spend in that space. Greenness of different campus spaces can influence students' perceived restorativeness. These beautiful places are not only created by Mother Nature, our excellent and talented grounds crews create and maintain them as well. Public areas and outdoor learning environments, including nature trails, lend more opportunities for community interaction and social encounters that foster a sense of belonging. All of this impacts retention. Then, then of course, there's the sense of well-being and even morale. So I think we can all identify, not just students, but employees, the value of what a beautiful landscape does for us. Again, Lone Star College has been cited for many years as one of those best places to work. In the two thousand and eight survey of the Chronicle of Higher Ed, when they asked college employees what they valued the most about their jobs, note that they said their physical space, and if it met their needs, and if the campus was beautiful. This SciFair student, I think, sums this up well. It's a place I like to be. This Lone, this Lone Star College Montgomery employee says that that place is just gorgeous. So what's landscape got to do with it? Well, research and our own experiences say it has a lot to do with it. Questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. You know, I've never have, I've been on all of the campuses and, and I visit them quite frequently, a couple, you know, every week. And I have never seen anything unkept, you know, at Lone Star, and I think that is a very worthwhile value that we've instilled. Because even if you look in the cafeteria, there's no paper on the floor, there's none of that kind of stuff. So, thanks for all of the work that you all do to keep our campus the way they look, and they also enhance our neighborhood, especially in my neighborhood. It's a site that everybody wants to look at, so thank you.
Thank you, it's part of our culture.
Any questions, board members? Oh, cleaned in buckets, oh, okay. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Good job. Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, Faculty Senate Representative, this. Mr. Donner. Donna Willingham. Glad to have you.
Hi, good evening, Board and Vice Chancellors, Presidents, and guests. I'm very excited to be here tonight, to be presenting to you. It's, it's quite an honor to be able to present to the Board. I don't think that I knew that in my career education at Lone Star that I'd ever have this opportunity, and so I value it very much, and I appreciate your time and, um, and getting to speak with you tonight. I did want to make one comment before I start my presentation, and that is, I actually deliberately chose the month of November to present, because when I think of November, I think of things that we're thankful for. And I'm very thankful for the opportunity to work at Lone Star College. I've been here fifteen years, and, um, I was in the business world before I went into higher education, and, um, I think it's an incredible place to work. I appreciate so much you, the Board, that the, um, that the environment that we have to work in, the support that all of you give, my President, Dr. Nutt, and I cannot imagine working anywhere else or doing anything else. And I'm just a regular faculty member, I'm nobody special, but, um, I do want you to know, I don't know that you get thanked enough for what you do and the leadership that you provide all of us, and, um, and I think, I think what I've been most, this is my fourth board meeting, and I think what I've been most impressed with when I've come to the meetings is your true, um, commitment to students, and it comes through in every board meeting, and I cannot thank you enough, that's what my commitment is to students, and it's very obvious when I come to the board meetings, and I, I appreciate that, um, very, very much. So, after that little, you know, display of emotion, let me move forward. Uh, so tonight, I'm very proud and excited to present to you about our Title V grants that we have from the Department of Education. Uh, Lone Star College North Harris and Lone Star College Tomball both have received those grants because they are Hispanic-serving institutions. The grant started in two thousand and sixteen, they're five-year grants, and each campus, uh, received over, a little over two million dollars. So these are large grants, and they have a lot of opportunity to do a lot of good for our students. So I wasn't sure if you knew anything about them, you may know everything about them, uh, pretend like you don't, please. And, uh, I'm going to, um, tell you about them tonight. So I'd like to start with the North Harris, oh, I'm the one clicking, I was like, who's the person going to change this? That would be me. Okay, let me do that. So, North Harris, the, uh, North Harris Grant is called CASA, and it stands for Connecting Students to the Campus Community, Acclimating Them to the Rigors of Academic Life, Helping Them Succeed and Self-Improve for the Duration, and Preparing Them to Achieve and Compete in College and Beyond. And you will find that there will be many, many acronyms in this presentation, because you know, as educators, we love acronyms. So, get ready for those. This grant has three major services, and we're going to talk about each one. The first one is called IMALLS, Information Technology Enhanced Multidisciplinary Academic Learning Lounge. I've no idea who made up that name, but they did a great job, I could never have come up with that myself. So it has four components, the multimedia studio, which helps students, uh, that are interested in, uh, TV studio production, which I think is very awesome for a community college. They have Library Two Point O, which gives students a lot of hands-on opportunity, uh, with various technologies, and the One Button Studio, uh, you've probably had a presentation on that, but those are pretty phenomenal, Tomball has one as well. And the Career Lab, which helps students be able to come in, find, uh, have an opportunity to research, uh, careers and opportunities, and, um, that has worked well for them. And then the Parent Academy, that has helped, uh, that gives insight to Hispanic families and helps them to understand the process of going to college, and, because as you know, if, if you're a first-generation college student, then complicate, going to college is complicated. I mean, I've heard a lot of people say you need a degree to figure out how to go, and that, and it's true, it's true. It can be the paperwork can be overwhelming, going in and trying to register can be overwhelming, whole process can be overwhelming, and so, um, this, the, the North Harris Grant, as well as the Tomball Grant, both have a, a component that, um, includes the family, which I think is super important that we bring in the families, because as you know, without family support and encouragement, it's difficult for students, especially first-generation students, to be successful. The next service that they offer is called CAST, Center for Academic Success and Transition, and its primary, uh, components are tutoring and transition advising. And once again, um, it's important that, that students, first-generation students, get the, the tutoring that they need and the help one-on-one that they need in order to be successful, as well as advising, uh, for transfers. So although, even if a student is coming to a local community college, it's very difficult and overwhelming and daunting to transfer to a university, and these students need a lot of guidance. Once again, if they don't have family members that have a college degree or upper degrees, then they need help to make that transfer, and so, including this as a part of the services that they provide first-generation students is, of course, incredibly helpful. The next component is MATCH, and it's called Meaningfully Aligned Targeted Curriculum Courses for Hispanic Students. And it is, um, the, and I, and there, there's a little bit of statistics here that I think that you're going to really appreciate. You can see the, um, writing across the curriculum and the higher success rates there. Then the control group, you can see the Summer Bridge Math Program, and the twenty-three percent increase, uh, success rate in math thirteen, fourteen. That's college algebra, and that's probably the most difficult class to, to pass in college, to be perfectly honest. The, it's probably one of the biggest stumbling blocks for, uh, students, and so having opportunities to help students get past that big gatekeeping class is incredibly important. And the picture that you see there is the Summer Bridge Program, and I think you'll see a couple of people that you know and love there in that picture. And then the DS English Redesign, increased success rates, as well as the English-Spanish Interpreter Program. In addition to that, they have professional development opportunities for faculty, because none of us ever know all that we need to know. As faculty members, if you have any intelligence at all, you know that you can always learn and get better and improve your craft. And so, um, giving faculty opportunities to especially know how to work with first-generation college students and how to support them better and well, uh, is, is, um, very advantageous. And so the grant, this, both of the grants, this one and the one at Tomball, both have a component with professional development, which is important and which is huge. I guess huge and important would be the same thing, sorry about that. The next screen and the, the print is a little bit small, but just notice the third, uh, I'm sorry, the second column, and you see what the benchmarks or baselines were, and then you see the improvements that were made in each of these key areas. And I want you to especially look at the first three. The first one showing the increase in persistence, the increase, the second one showing the increase in the, um, developmental English success rates, and then the third one showing the increase in developmental math. And so you can see that, that incredible results have come from this money and from the efforts that have been put forth in this grant. And so, kudos to North Harris and all their faculty, shout out to all of you, are doing an awesome job. I now would like to tell you about the, uh, Tomball and their, so, so the grant money, they applied for the same grant, but the way that it looks on each campus is a little bit different. Each campus got to write what they wanted their grant to look like, and so there's, looks a little bit different, although they have some components that are similar. Because of, uh, a little bit of delay, Tomball got started in their grant a little bit later, so they don't, we don't have all the data to share with you, because they haven't done it long enough to actually have all the data collection, but hopefully in a year or so, we'll have more of the actual data to share. So the, so the first initiative is the Family Academy, like I mentioned before, the importance of including the family in understanding the college experience and what it means to be a good college student, and the importance of family in. of family in the supporting of the student. We've had 14 workshops on campus and at local high schools this semester to help get students supporting and behind and backing their students and helping them to understand what it means for their family member to be a college student. Those programs are offered in English and in Spanish. The second initiative is the Leading the Pack Speaker Series, which I think is awesome. You're going to also see another person there that you know and love. And they bring in accomplished, very successful, first-generation students themselves, there's people with great grit stories that will be very inspiring to the students, because what we're wanting to see is that students see people that say, that person started just like me, that person came from the background that I came from, and look, they made it, they can do it, and so can I. And so these have been very well-received, and students, it motivates them to see where they can be and what all they can do. There have been seven presentations this semester with those, and they have all been very well-attended. The next one is Financial Wellness Series, and this was added on a little bit later in, it was not a part of the initial part of the grant, because it came very clear that a lot of students did not have the understanding for financial that they needed to, understanding how loans work or student debt works, or how to manage their money, or what to do with their money. And I think there's probably a lot of, I don't think it's just college students, I think there's a lot of people in their early twenties that don't know how to manage their money, and they saw early on that they could really help these students, that they would help them understand how to manage their money better. And so they have given six conferences on that, and I noticed the one that was just this week on the 29th, on maximizing your personal wealth, and when I was putting this together, I thought, gee, I wished I would have gone to that. So the topics have been excellent, they've also been well-attended, and have been very helpful to students. We actually also include, as you know, financial literacy in our EDUC 1300 class for the same reason, because that is a real weakness, that's difficult for students to understand how to manage their money. Many come in with no idea how to budget a checkbook, they don't even know what it means to get a loan, how to get a loan, they don't understand interest rates, they don't understand the connection between credit and the interest that you're going to pay in the long run. So helping these students have this financial literacy is incredibly helpful to them. The fourth initiative is this incredible space. I wish that you would have an opportunity to see it, and if you're in the Tomball area and you want to stop by and see it, it's absolutely beautiful. I'm not exactly sure of the square footage of it, but it is all open, you can see, that's a picture of it, you can see the windows, it's open collaborative areas, it's study rooms, and then in the spring, there's going to be a food pantry there once again. The leadership at both campuses have been very responsive to student need, and Tomball has seen a need for, to have a food pantry, their students are coming in that do not have enough food to eat, and so they have, are in the process of putting that together, a food pantry that will be there for students to come in, get whatever they need, however much that they need, and it will be available to all students. And it's, they don't have to be actually a part of this program, it's going to be available to all students that attend the Tomball campus. The fifth initiative are the Class Scholars and the Class Ambassadors, and we have some of those students here tonight that you're going to get to meet. I know that it's, you enjoy seeing the students a lot when they come, so I had, so I brought some to you, so you can, so you can see them. And they have 25 scholars this fall and four ambassadors. And ambassadors serve as mentors for these scholars to help them find their way and to help them get in to make the connections with the campus and with the college that they need to make. On a final note, the way that these grants are written is that they are going to get a dollar-for-dollar match with monies that they raise from the department, monies they raise from us. The Department of Education will give them a dollar-to-dollar match to continue these programs after the grants end. And so that's very unusual in grants, and it's, it's an awesome opportunity, but it doesn't do them any good if they don't raise any funds at all. So I'm here to say, if you have a rich friend, please send them our way to North Harris or Tomball. We would like to meet with them, and I also thought maybe we just pass the plate while we're, while we're here. So I'd like to introduce the leadership of these grants at North Harris. Ann Albarelli is the project director, and if you would stand. And then Tomball, I told them there's free dinner, so a lot of people came from Tomball. I'm just kidding, it had nothing to do with it. Magdalena Mendoza Stark is the Director of Diversity and Inclusion, and she heads the grant up. Daniela Cortez Guerra is the Outreach Coordinator. Jack Willem Burrows is one of our Class Ambassadors. Georgette Smith is a Class Scholar. Jasmine Mara Diaga is the Class Ambassador. And Kevin Lee is another Class Ambassador. Thank y'all for coming tonight, we appreciate it. Do you have any questions for them?
I have a question for them.
Good, because I told them that you would.
So what do you like, you know, as an ambassador, like what's the, what's the one thing that you like to do, that you enjoy to do, I guess?
Do you want to come to the microphone?
I know what he likes to do, hang out with pretty girls. Oh, right ahead.
Apparently by coincidence, I was the only male who applied as a work study. But to answer your question, ma'am, the best thing I like working as a work study in class is really forming a relationship for class scholars and helping them transition into college life, because most first-generation students, it really is a struggle trying to manage everything, the process is overwhelming, and as a third-symester sophomore college student, I can help, help them not make the same mistakes that I have, being also a first-generation student myself. So just communicating with them, building a relationship, that to me is the best part of working in class. Yes, ma'am?
How much time, how much time does it require to be an effective ambassador?
I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know how to answer your question, sir, but I think the mandatory requirement hours for our work study is 19 hours a week, that's how much hours we can work. And I try to work all 19 hours. I try to communicate and, communicate in contact with my men, my class scholars, mentees as often as I could. I say definitely a lot of time is required.
That's a good answer.
Thank you.
This was quite a bit of information, is it on the website somewhere?
It actually is, yes.
And then the other question is, do people have to come to Lone Star to find this information out, or are you willing to go out to the community?
Oh, so Magdalena will speak to that. And by the way, Magdalena is a Tomball graduate.
So, good evening, everyone, my name's Magdalena Mendoza Stark. I have the pleasure and honor of serving as the Director of Diversity and Inclusion, which means that I also oversee the HSI Title V Grant at LSC Tomball. To answer your question, all of our information is available for both North Harris and for Tomball, is available at our website. One of the unique things is that we both received this grant, but we have similarities, but then we also have our own differences, because the grants allow us to be able to address the issues at our individual campuses. So for example, ours is very much from the bottom up, so we are starting things brand-new at our campus, with the development of our new center, which just opened up a month ago. We're actually going to get furniture delivered tomorrow. We're just starting the new programming compared to, I believe, North Harris, and if I'm mistaken, please correct me if I'm wrong, their program being, a lot of it was already predeveloped. But all of our information is available online. One of the things that we do, and Daniela could talk about this a little bit more, is that we are intentional about going to the community and meeting community members where they're at. So for, one of, one of the things that we've been doing is identifying, especially because one of the focuses is increasing the recruitment persistence and retention of Latinx students. We've been going out to high-populated churches and meeting those students where they're at, and going out there and saying, you know what, we can't just wait for students to come to us, because anything that, the moment they step in, they're scared, they're nervous, but if we start building that relationship out in the community they see as a part of that community, they start building that trust. So one of the things that we try to do is make sure that we're also involved in nonprofit organizations in order to develop those relationships with nonprofit organizations within our service area. Yes, sir?
So if the church is having an event, who do we contact to have a discussion?
So that's a really great question. So depending on your service, the service area, I would definitely recommend that you contact your outreach and recruitment department. I would be more than happy to provide you with who that individual would be and be able to refer you to the correct individual.
Sounds great. Thank you.
So as they mentioned, I am an LSC Tomball graduate. I graduated with my Associate's of Science and Associate of Arts and also a certification in Surgical Technology. So in order to put myself through school, I decided to do a workforce program, so I was a surgical assistant for four years in order to pay my undergrad. I have a very strong connection to, and very personal connection to Lone Star. My mother has also worked for Lone Star for 28 years. So y'all mentioned about the landscaping and those experiences that they create, and I agree 100%, because my mom has been a custodian at the Lone Star College Tomball campus, and I've always grown, she takes pride in making sure that our campus is clean and is well-maintained. So I agree 100% when y'all mentioned that the landscape and the beautification of our campuses, it does attract students, it attracts community members, so that's very important. So I worked for Lone Star as a work study student, part-time academic advisor, and now I'm back serving this great institution. So that's a quick overview about my personal journey, and I'm also first-generation, so this work is very personal to me and to my staff members and to my team, because I couldn't do it without them. So, yeah.